Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, February 19th, 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Green Room. Before the pledge, I wanted to explain that we have a new PA system today, and so it may be giving us all kinds of noise that we don't want to hear.
We're learning.
We're learning. Okay.
Welcome to the Morgan Football Game.
So Dennis, if you'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors who wish to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Sure.
My name is Walter Clark. I'm currently a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm Vice Chairman of that commission, and it was brought to my attention that there's interests or concern about a conflict of interest between people serving on wetlands and also serving on planning and zoning. Prior to moving to Clinton, I was the Planning and Zoning in the town of Orange for 16 years, Chairman of that commission for almost 12. We had a dedicated liaison on planning and zoning that always sat, was a full member of the Wetlands Commission, and it was a very valuable tool to have that explanation for us. Furthermore, there's nothing in the state statutes that prohibits somebody from wetlands also serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's specific things, you can't be on ZBA and also on planning and zoning, you can't be a ZBA member and also serve as a ZEO or temporary ZEO, and then I think it's 8-11, there's a whole series of things that prohibit you from serving on a board or conflict of interest during those decisions. But there's nothing in the statutes that prohibits somebody from wetlands also serving on planning and zoning. So I think that should be taken into consideration. It's a valuable tool for Planning and Zoning members to have somebody that was involved in wetlands discussion, should any questions come up during our deliberations, they have firsthand knowledge of the procedure that's gone through to come up with their decision. So I just wanted to mention that to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other visitors? Okay. On to item number three, the approval of minutes, February 2nd, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining? Motion carries. Item number four, appointments, and we're beginning with Wayne Buchanan. Hello, how are you?
Very good. I'm Wayne. So thank you. You've had my, probably my more than necessary bio, and I've been before the Town Council at other times advocating for other people, and I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to serve my town. I've run a couple of times for elections but never been selected, but I have been the immediate past Chairman of the Republican Town Committee, and would like to get my foot in the door of service here in my hometown. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? You're not currently on any other boards or commissions, is that correct?
No.
Excellent. Okay. Any other questions for? No? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Please, if you would go to the Town Clerk at your convenience and get sworn in.
Sure.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Leah Saunders is... Hey, how are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Very good.
I'm Leah. I think everybody here probably knows me. Nancy came to me asking for help with the 250 Committee, so I said I would help her. Originally, it was just to do Facebook and promoting, but she needed a little bit more, so I said I would help, so just doing my part.
Excellent. That was what I was going to ask you, how it was you became interested, but you just gave me the answer.
She came to me.
We're still adding members, so does anyone have any questions for Leah? Nope? All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations, and if you would be sworn in at your convenience. Thank you very much. Item number five, Homeward Bound. They're seeking an exemption request to Ordinance 194-4A and 194-5A for the Darling Divas Bingo Drag on March 22nd. Do you want to address the discussion from last meeting?
So, as part of my Town Manager Report, we did get a response from our insurance company, and just to read it to you, anytime alcohol is involved, the risk is higher. So any organization that is holding an event on town property that has alcohol, they want to make sure that the town requires them to carry liquor liability along with general liability, and also name the town as an additional insured. So currently, everyone has to, if they do use our space, get the general liability. So those groups that are bringing in alcohol, they do need to get that liquor liability along with that. These two groups have already been told, and I believe even got the certificates back to us already. So the policy has been updated on our website, and moving forward, everyone is aware of the best practice of our insurance company.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion for the exemption request? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion, Dennis?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I just want to make a statement. I have nothing against, I don't even know, this is the Homeward Bound, and I think a week later, we have somebody else coming in. It seems like I'm going to be very blunt as I can. I'm not approved by any manner. I've been known to abide. However, it seems like the Town Hall is getting to be a beer hall, in my estimation. Years ago, we made the exemptions for the big, big affairs like Blue Fish, Fireworks, the Food Festival, as of late, I think the Mardi Gras next week has it, and I'm just wondering if we aren't just getting a little bit too lenient with our, always just rubber stamping. I know it started, I think, in, I'm not, nothing against this Homeward Bound, but it started earlier in the year, I think with the Arts Society, we let them come in with a party and stuff. I really would like to have a workshop or whatever. I think we should review where we're going with this. Are we sending a wrong message that you can't have fun without having a drink? The Firehouse has had bingo for I don't know how many years, they don't allow drinking there, at the Firehouse, and they have packed crowds. Now, I can see big affairs, and I guess we're sort of committed, I guess, now to, but it's, I think we really should have a, for the future, that we should have a little stricter policy. That's just my personal thing. Are we sending a wrong message to the youth in this town? Here we are, TV ads, don't drink and drive, don't do this, do that, and here we are, to drop the hat, come to the Town Hall. I would really like to find out what other towns do in their Town Hall. How many times they allow liquor on their premises, and, you know, what's the criteria for it? Because I'm sure you don't go into New Haven's Town Hall and have a bingo with alcohol, or an Arts Society party, or Dennis Donovan having a birthday party or something. So I just think, you know, if we keep opening these doors, I think we're opening ourselves up that, how can we then say no to anybody? And then all of a sudden, it's going to be once a month, two, two times a month, three times a month? This is not what this Town Hall is for. This is a Town Hall for government. So I'll get off my little speech, but I thought I had to get that off, and it had nothing to do with Homeward Bound. I know next week, it's Morgan School, I think, has theirs coming up, or I don't see their request here, so maybe they withdraw it. I'm not sure.
The next meeting.
The next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, it's just my two pens, okay? Just wanted to say that.
I would be happy to look into other towns. I know from East Haven in my time there, we had the same ordinance, and during my time, we didn't have any exemptions. There was never a request to have one. But I can look into other towns and see what their procedures are, and if they do have an exemption, how often they grant it, if that's something the council would like.
Sure. Okay. All right. So for this particular request, I'm going to ask if all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Dennis. Number six, the financial report.
Yes, aye. Good evening. I placed the latest audited financial statements in front of you, they're ending June 30th, 2024. These statements are also on the Town Website, so if you don't want a hard copy, I'll be happy to take them back if you want. A lot of people like to scribble, right? So whatever. I left a few comments. The auditors will be here March 5th for their meeting, and they'll be presenting. However, I just, you know, for you, made a few comments. I always like to talk about the very first bullet, the very first financial statements that you're going to see, what we call the governmental-wide financial statements. Now, we're used to talking about funds, right? We're pretty used to talking about funds. We know the General Fund, that's our main operational fund. We've talked about the Capital Project Fund, we've talked about some special revenue funds, grant funds, but the first set of financial statements, the government-wide financial statements, combines all the funds that we have into really one set of financial statements. So it can be kind of confusing when you look at it. For instance, when you look at it, you see the Education Line item is huge, right? Because it includes the education grants as well, not just what's in the budget. So people question that if they don't realize it's really all the funds combined together. When you look at funds, we, funds don't create assets on the books. Assets in a fund are really expended, because funds are really all about governmental inflows and outflows. So as opposed to a company where they, it's not a word, but when they assetize, when they purchase an asset and they depreciate it, funds don't, they expense it immediately. Same thing for long-term liabilities. For instance, when we build a project, if we have bonds, we don't create a long-term liability. Now, obviously, we keep the information, right? Because you have to pay off the bonds, but those bond proceeds are a revenue count, because they're inflows that are used to expend and build buildings. Well, these combined governmental-wide financial statements in the front, and I give you the page numbers, we have to convert all those past projects into assets, and we depreciate them on this schedule. We also add the liabilities. So it is a little bit confusing, but what do I get out of these financial statements? I know, I remember when they first came up with the regulation, I think it was probably 20 years, seems like two years ago, all the finance directors were up in arms. I mean, the work you had to do to actually put it together and gather all the assets, including sewer pipes, but it is quite useful, they've come to realize. What I look at is on the balance sheet, I look at the fund balance, or they call it the statement of net position. So the net position is the fund balance. If that increases year over year, what does that tell me? Tells me the town is investing in itself, the town is going in the right direction. Well, if you look at these financial statements, the fund balance in the government-wide financial statements is increasing year over year, which means we're investing. We're purchasing capital assets, building buildings, and we're paying off our debt. So that's one big thing that I get out of it, the first thing I look at. Another interesting thing is the next page in these governmental-wide is the financial, is the income statement. They call it the statement of activities. And I actually put it on the notes here, because it's very interesting. It shows you by function total expenses for that year from all sources. So in other words, on here, if you look at public safety, total expenses were 6.1 million. Then it goes in the columns to the right of it, well, how do we fund that? So they have what they call program revenues, some of it's funded by charges for services, some of it's funded by operating grants, some of it's funded by capital grants, but as you see, these function expenditures can be funded by these items 100%. So down below, it tells you where are the mostly funded, well, taxes, right? Taxes, and then general grants from the state. So it's very interesting to see the function, how much we spend on that function in the year in total, and where do we get the money for that function. So I just wanted to point that out. Pages 24 and 26, we get into funds, and they report the major governmental funds, so they're reporting the General Fund, the Capital Project Fund, and then a column for all other governmental funds. I pointed out that if you want detail on all those other governmental funds, that's on page 127, you'll get the detail of all those funds. Next page, proprietary funds. We only have one small proprietary fund, and that's for heart and hypertension. Very few claims, just a couple of prescriptions, not a major fund. We have fiduciary funds, and that's our pension funds and OPEB fund. We have three pension funds managed by the town, and then we have two major pension funds that are outside of the town, which is managed by the state. One for the teachers, retired teachers, and one for the employees other than police and volunteer fire, and Board of Education, uncertified personnel. Pages 98 through 101 show the General Fund budget performance in detail, and then a summary can be found on page 125. Use of fund balance that year was, use of fund balance budget was 3.3 million, we actually used 1.2 million, which is, which is a positive performance. And that was mainly attributed to intergovernmental revenues. We received a municipal revenue sharing grant that we couldn't budget for, because you don't know if you're going to get it every year. There's just no way of knowing. Charges for services, real estate conveyance and building permits had a positive variance, that helped us, and then of course, investment income. Expenditures were 483,000 under budget. Page 126 is a report of the tax collector. Current tax collection rate was 99%, and the balance at year-end in the uncollected taxes was 1.2 million. So we budget for part of that, right? And we call it prior year taxes, and I think we budget offhand 400,000, something like Page 129 and 130 shows the revenues, expenses, and fund balances for the other governmental funds that were totaled in the front. The only thing you have to be aware of, you'll see a fund, for instance, called Culture and Recreation, but that really comprises five funds, and I've given you an example of those five funds for cultural and recreation. In other words, we have recreation activities revolving, we have Shellfish Commission, Youth Recreation Center, parks and recreation donations. So basically, we combine all the like funds that are culture and recreation and create one fund on the financial statements. And that's it. Just some brief comments to, just to show you around the financials. The auditors will be here, and they'll probably, hopefully, discuss a little, something different. So that's that. And after the auditors present, if there are any questions on their financials, through the chair, if you, you're welcome to shoot a question, I'll be glad to answer. One more thing I forgot, in the, in the, in the front, in the fund, financial statements, a lot of people get, will ask questions, because they see the Board of Ed line item much larger than the budget. We put in the state contribution for the Clinton teachers there. It's an offset. Board of Ed expenditures are increased by 5 million for the state contribution for the teachers' pension, and at the same time, the revenues, intergovernmental revenues are increased by 5 million. So it's an offset, but you just need to be aware of that. As far as the finance directors' report, there's really, really nothing different on that report from the last report, except to say that we are watching our winter maintenance accounts. The weather has been a little bit more than usual, so I've been told we're probably going to be over about 25,000 in winter maintenance, and then winter materials like salt, we'll probably go over on that as well. We have, what is it, 35,000 in contingency, which will probably pay for winter maintenance. One thing I added, just, just because for interest's sake, I added one more report, and it's at the end, it's the current tax receipts history, and this is the report that I monitor each month, I get receipts from the tax collector, and it's important to monitor it, because, you know, shortfall in taxes can create problems with the budget. It's interesting, what is it, it's about 10 years, and for instance, the first two months of the year, July and August, are a big collection, and it's interesting to see year over year how they're pretty similar. In other words, 2020, we collected 54.5% in July and August, 2023, 55.5, this year, 55.3. So it's pretty consistent, our collections, but it's still important to, to keep an eye out for current tax collections. So I just thought I would just put that in there, just to, for additional information. As far as, what's the report? The American, oh, what's that grant?
ARF.
Thank you. Thank you. As far as ARF, I think unless you want it monthly, I was going to report quarterly, because that lasts till, all the way till December 2026, so I thought quarterly was appropriate. Of course, anytime, anytime you need a report, I'll be happy to report on it. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Questions, anybody? All right. Thank you, Bob.
I just have one.
No, of course.
The contingency accounts are only $36,484. You think that will get us to the end of the year now?
Winter maintenance, I think that's going to take care of winter maintenance. If anything else pops up, obviously, it won't. We'll, we'll have to find some other accounts. Some departments may come for a transfer, and they'll be able to handle it within the department.
Anyone else? Thank you, Bob. Item number seven is the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening, everyone. So Bob mentioned our Public Works, I want to thank them. We've had a very active weather pattern, and a lot of those storms have been on the weekends, and they've done a tremendous job getting our roads cleared and making sure that everything is safe for our public safety and our residents, so I wanted to thank them. As Carrie mentioned, we have our new audio system, which is debuting tonight, so this was in response to when we had the town meeting for Pearson, it was a large crowd, and the feedback was not positive that people could hear everything, and we want to make sure everyone is receiving the correct information, so this system install was part of that. We have started the budget process. Tomorrow night is our first night where myself and Superintendent will be presenting a overview of our budget, the budget drivers, and Town Council will be receiving their budget books or workbooks, and then the calendar is up on the website for everyone to view, but the budget workshops will be on February 25th, 27th, and March 4th at 6:00 here in the Green Room. I encourage everyone to come out and learn about the budget and what the expenditures and requests look like this year. We had a workshop a couple weeks ago about Code of Ethics, and one of the recommendations from the attorneys was that our current Code of Ethics is, needs updating. It, you know, one of the things alone is that it refers to the Board of Selectmen and Office of Selectmen, so clearly, we don't have that form of government anymore. So it's been suggested that potentially two individuals from the council would work with me and the Town Attorney to recreate or edit the Code of Ethics, and then we would present it to the council, then it would have a public hearing, because it would be changing of an ordinance. So are there any individuals on the Town Council that would like to work with me and Attorney Denofrio to update the Code of Ethics?
Sure.
Mike and Dennis. Yay. Okay. Great. And that is all I have right now.
Okay. Item number eight, Chairman's Report. I just wanted to thank some members of the council after hearing what we did from the lawyers. I know that neither Mike nor Chris wanted to step down from their positions. I know you are dedicated, I know Chris is dedicated, Hank as well, and they've all resigned because of what it was that the lawyers told us, as far as any council member should not be involved other than a liaison on one another. So I wanted to thank you for that, because I know that that was no small sacrifice. So, thank you. And that's it for me. Town Council Committee Liaison Reports, item number 10. Anyone?
I, anybody go first?
After you.
My turn. The Police Department met, and things are rolling along, I guess they've made their budget request, and they seem to be satisfied there. The only bad news, I guess, is that our brand-new female officer resigned. She quit. Chief said, really didn't get a real good explanation, I guess, because I don't think they had, what do you call that, exited.
They didn't have an opportunity to have an exit.
Yeah. She didn't want to do that, so. Anyways, we have to start over, square one. We do have a young man up at the academy. I, I don't know, I think he's got about three weeks, six weeks left, something like that, but of course, then he has to be on the road for six months, so we're not going to get any help there. And there's one officer right now on short-term injury, but they expect him right back. So they're down a couple, and it's unfortunate, because we're sort of in a bind, as you know, with the overtime. They were close, or a little bit over, so he's going to do the best he can, and hopefully at the end of the year, as Bob said, that maybe there'd be some kind of interdepartment that could help out. And that's about the news. Another news, just for informational, one of our citizens requested the DOT to put
DOT to put up historic signs at exit 63, get, both exits, getting off at exit 63. And the DOT said it had to go through our traffic authority here in Clinton, and the traffic authority did, uh, agree to it, and they will send the request to DOT to put, uh, some kind of, uh, signage out there that's gonna indicate that there are, there are historic, uh, designations or districts here in the town of Clinton. So.
Okay, great.
Just information.
Thank you.
That's it.
Anyone else? Brian, do you have something?
Um, nothing big, just that the plan of conservation and development is still going on. There's been about 300 people who have now filled it out, but there are 13,000 people that live in this town, so encourage you to send that out to all of your networks to make sure that people have a say in how this town evolves over time.
Okay. Liaison?
No.
Okay, that's everybody? Okay.
So on to, um, item number 11, an executive session for personnel pursuant to CGSI, or that's a 1-200-6A, and real estate CGS 1-200-6ND. Is there, yes?
Should we go into that first executive session? Okay. So this is one of two executive sessions, and this is a, uh, one?
It's gonna be one executive session and then one.
Right. Got it. So, is there a motion to go into? All right, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, so we're going to go into executive session, and we'll call you back.
So just to let you know, we've come out of executive session, and we only have two of the three applicants here for the inland wetlands, um, appointments, so we do not need to have the interviews. We will speak to each individual, um, but there are two spaces available and two, um, individuals here for those spots. So the council will talk to each of you, um, but we will not be going back into an executive session.
Okay. Who would like to start the questions? Dennis?
No, there's only four questions. There's one, two, three, four.
Okay, all right.
I'll keep my mic up for once.
So let's begin with one of the, one of the two. Chris, would you like to?
Sure.
We'll start the questions with you, and I will let.
I'll start, I'll start. Chris, so you're already a alternate, um, so do you go to the me, I'm, I'm asking question three, but it says, are you able to commit to regular meeting schedule? Do you, have you been going to the meetings? Have you missed a lot of meetings? And if going forward, are you able to commit?
I have attended all of the regular meetings since I've become an alternate, uh, December 2023. So I've been, uh, serving over a year as an alternate. I've attended all of the regular meetings. Uh, I've attended most of the site walk meetings as well. Um, I think I may have missed one or two. Uh, those are usually held on a Saturday. I had a conflict on one, one or two days. But I am able to commit, and I will, uh, be at the meetings from this time forward.
Okay, that's good. Good for me.
Next question.
Sure. How do you see this border commission contributing to the overall well-being of the town?
This commission is vital to the town. It is vital for us to be protecting and preserving, uh, inland wetlands. Uh, I know that, uh, we take our job very seriously. I take my work very seriously on the commission. Um, I've studied, read and studied the, uh, regulations. I think it's very important for the commission to enforce the regulations, uh, to interpret them very strictly, but also very fairly. Uh, so I think we need to protect our wetlands. I live on Hammock Road that oversees the, uh, wetlands there, and I see the biodiversity, the ecosystem going on every day, and how incredibly important this is to Clinton, to our community, and really to our state, nation and world. So, very important stuff.
Thank you.
We did three and four, skipped one and two because they're alternates.
Sure, yeah, relevant, so I think we're good.
We're good.
Everything else, this is already on.
Yeah.
You want me to shut up? Because I can still tell.
We're not gonna tell you to shut up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Bob?
Same question, there you go.
I'm gonna try to do three and four.
Did you show up?
Same question, do you show up?
Did you show up?
Yes, I am here.
What else? What was the other question I was asked?
So, have you been attending all the meetings, and do you plan to continue?
Absolutely, uh, I'm very compassionate about inland wetlands. I've had a discussion with Michelle about it. It's one of the first commissions I joined. I've never missed a meeting. There was only one walk I couldn't, uh, Shoreline Gardens, and I made arrangements, I walked the day before because I was going away on vacation. So I'm still able to view the site so I can make proper decisions. So I've, even though I wasn't on attendance, I was being there with everybody. I did go the day before with permission from Kathy to do that, just to walk the site.
Nice. Brian?
And how do you see the border commission contributing to the overall well-being of the town?
Our inland wetlands is very important. Uh, there's a lot of things I've learned as being on there by going to some of these, uh, training classes, feral ponds. A lot of insects live in there that is important to our ecosystem, and, uh, filling them in and getting less of them, uh, really, uh, disturbs a lot of things. You fill in wetlands, it creates wetlands where they normally weren't before. It's important to follow the laws in the wetlands to, uh, keep that from happening. Because you fill in wetlands on your property, it's gonna drive that water somewhere, you're gonna change the water table, so it's very important to keep it the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So let's begin with the first seat that was vacated, and that was by Ryan Tartizel. All right, Ryan Tartizel's vacated seat. And, um, do I hear a motion to appoint?
There's a movement.
All right.
I'll appoint, I'll appoint, uh, Chris for that position. Do them both?
All right.
I mean, it should just be, I mean, a motion to appoint, uh, Bob Corson and Chris Horvath, um, from alternate seats to full seats on inland wetlands commission for terms ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Yeah. All same term, all everything.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries for both. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And you know the drill about going up to the town clerk?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Are we still gonna do that even though we're on the board?
For a full seat? Can't hurt.
Do it anyway. You gotta do all day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna move you. You don't like your sworn-in date as not a full seat.
Thank you, boys.
Yeah. All right. All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay. So 13, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody.